Okay, welcome those who joined us here in Councilroom. As those of you who have been here for 20 years, this is a meeting of the professional city council on Monday, July 24th, 2017. I'll call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise. I'll leave you with a notification to the council leaders. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. As we move forward on various issues this evening, guidance. As we serve the community in the coming days, strengthen us to do what's right. And Lord, we especially ask that we stay mindful of those in need. Tonight again, we ask for your blessing and presence and to be felt by those who serve our country, as well as our public safety employees who serve our nation, our state, and our city. Guide and protect them and were incumbent to their failures as they protect all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I had the honor this evening of making some special presentations. I will start with one gentleman that could not make it here this evening, but I wanted to recognize him anyway. That is Mr. Everett Jordan. For those that do not know, for the last several years, from July of 2009 to June of 2017, he has served as Pecosin's representative to the Thomas Nelson College Community Board. And if you know Everett, you also know that he is the director of, and superintendent, basically, of Newport News Shipbuilding's Apprentice School. It was a natural fit. I think that it has done a great deal of service to tie Pecosin and Thomas Nelson and Newport News Shipbuilding together. And I think he's done an admirable job. I hated when he sent me his email saying that he would not be able to serve anymore. We have appointed a replacement for him, but I wanted to recognize him since he could not be here. So I want everybody to know that. The next one that I have is Jennifer Moss Stedler. Is she here? Okay, well, I'll read this one as well. This is for Jennifer M. Moss Stedler. She says, "Invaluable service to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board from 2015 to 2017", also signed by the entire council. And then last, but certainly not least, always love to do these, this is an Eagle Scout Award. And Gabriel, could you come up and join me here at the podium? Thanks for coming this evening. All right, this is in recognition and honor of Eagle Scout Gabriel Olson. And it says, "Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of our youth and its many programs with, which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others. And whereas Gabriel Olson has been a steadfast member of the Boy Scouts of America and has attained the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Eagle Scout is the Boy Scout of America's highest rank, that requires true dedication and commitment to achieve and working towards his Eagle Scout badge, Gabriel Olson created and installed a garden area at Messick Point, bordering it with poles, installed two rain barrels and overflow hoses, and planted bushes and natural wetland grasses. And whereas it is important to recognize Gabriel Olson for his contributions he makes to his community and for his leadership and inspiration of others. Now therefore, I, the Mayor of Pecosin, do hereby applaud Gabriel Olson for success in earning the rank of Eagle Scout, sincerely appreciate your service to our community and look forward to great things from you in the future." Would you like to say anything to the public? Go right ahead. Don't forget to take that.
I'd like to thank my scout troop for helping me with my project and Tom Jones for helping me with the project too. And I like to do this because I love my city so much and you guys are the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. City Manager, you have some new employees you'd like. This is getting to be a weekly or every month thing now, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is. First, I'd like to go ahead and recognize Battalion Chief John Young and ask him to come up and introduce our two newest members of the Fire Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Manager. Tonight, I have the honor of introducing our two newest members of the Fire Department. Both of these gentlemen have come to us from Newport News Fire Department with previous experience. They've fit into our organization very, very well. They've been with us for about a month now. Neither of them work directly for me, so I'll let them each say a little bit about themselves. Firefighter Mirianka and firefighter Willis.
Oh, Lord. Sorry. I'm not experienced with microphones. I've lived in the city for nine years now, fell in love with the place immediately. My mother-in-law lived here prior to my wife and I and our two kids. Our two children have been, pretty much, this is all they know. They've been here since they were babies. Like the chief spoke of earlier, I did come from Newport News Fire Department with experience and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you for having me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, City Council, my name's Eric Willis and as the chief stated, I just come from City of Newport News Fire Department. I retired from there with 25 years of service. I bring skills and abilities I acquired there and experience to City of Pecosin. I'm looking forward to sharing that with all of my coworkers there and see if we can continue to make the city of Pecosin a safe and happy place to live.
Okay, thank you all for coming this evening. Look forward to seeing you from the station.
I guess I should turn this on. But look forward to seeing you both there at the Station House as council comes. Did the battalion chief tell you there was a quiz later on about names of council? Obviously not. But no, thank you for coming, taking time this evening, and we look forward to serving with you. Okay, thanks. Thanks, battalion chief.
And finally, I'd like to ask Kim Healy to come forward. Many of you probably know Kim, and chances are, if you've been in Pecosin for any time, she has helped you in the Commissioner's Office and the DMV Select. Recently, Kim moved up and has assumed administrative responsibilities with City Manager's Office.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm very excited about my new position. I'm looking forward to working with you all, and that's about it. I'm just excited and ready to get going.
That's great. Kim, I have to say what Randy said. Your reputation precedes you, you know, great customer service downstairs. We look forward to you being in the City Manager's Office.
Thank you.
Probably more so than you will after a few months after we've worn you down. We will try not to do that too much. Dave, you got to watch the Parks and Rec Director back there because he requires a lot of management.
I've heard about him too, yeah.
But we really look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And hope the steps don't hurt too much coming up.
I'm not. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Kim. All right, that's it for this. And then for special presentations, next is an audience for visitors. If you'd like to address council on any subject except for the public hearing, and there's going to be some words that I'm going to tell you about the public hearing on farm animals, we'll let you speak tonight if you want to speak in behalf of that, but we'll get to that in a minute. But if you want to address council on any other subject, now is that time.
My name is Janice Powell and I live at 306 Powhatan Drive. I'm a member of the Community Participation Team, but I'm not speaking on behalf of that group tonight. I'm here as a taxpayer and to ask you to consider three things tonight. The first is to table the resolution revising and re-establishing guidelines for the development of EDA-owned property in the Big Woods. To instruct the EDA to cease any and all marketing or sales discussions for the EDA-owned property in the North Big Woods. And to host a public forum and work session to publicly discuss the results from the citizen survey. I attended the May 22nd City Council meeting when the resolution and guidelines for the EDA was on the agenda. A number of people spoke to the citizen survey that was about to be mailed out, and we asked that you postpone a vote on the resolution until the survey was done. The Community Participation Team was never given a deadline for completing its task. In fact, at one of our very first meetings, Mr. Hunt told us that we could take as long as necessary to get the job done, as long as we got it done right. And now with all the results in and tabulated, it's safe to say we've met our charter. The problem is, in my opinion, you're all about to consider voting on the EDA resolution again, but there's been no discussion about the survey results. During your televised debate on the merits of waiting to hear back from the survey, all of you, with the exception of Mr. Green, said that you wanted to wait on the vote of the resolution until the results of the survey were in. Mr. Green was concerned that you were all sending a bad message to the EDA by postponing the vote and that it was a slap in the face to the EDA to not vote. I personally believe it's a slap in the face to the citizens who submitted survey results if you do not delay this vote until there's been a full discussion on what they had to say. Twenty-nine percent of all the homeowners in this city responded. That's almost 30 percent. Thirteen hundred and three surveys were returned. Many respondents wrote comments thanking the city for the opportunity to provide input, and most surveys were completed very thoughtfully. Many wrote that they are very interested in the opportunity to view and discuss the survey results. Some were actually skeptical that their opinions would not even be heard. Given the fact that Legacy has received its final approvals and they're all clear to go ahead with their permitting process for the 100-acre mixed-use development just outside this building, we are left with six parcels of city and EDA-owned property in the North Big Woods as our last remaining piece of undeveloped property. The city projects that the buildout of Legacy will result in a $32 million impact on the city with another $2.4 million in annual tax revenue. As such, the current $1.5 million assessed value of this last remaining piece of city-owned property will increase significantly. There is no urgency for City Council to act on the resolution, and there's certainly no urgency for the EDA to begin or continue promoting the property for sale. I believe that we should leave the property alone until we see what the Legacy development does for us. We've been through a rough couple of years in this town, and there's been a great deal of division regarding the proposed developments in the Big Woods. Pros and cons, both sides. Do we want the Big Woods developed? Do we want Walmart? Do we want 200 apartments, 500 homes? Do we need Victory Boulevard widened? Do we want better housing? Can we generate more commercial tax? During the contentious City Council meetings regarding the Big Woods that started two summers ago, the citizens of this city were challenged by the City Council to get more involved, to pay attention, and to take note of public hearings and to stay informed. At one meeting in August, after calling the 200 or so people who showed up here in this very room a mob, we were encouraged to sign up for boards and commissions and to be part of the process. Some people even chose to run for City Council, and we now have three new members who were elected on the promise to listen to what the electorate was really saying. The citizen survey is part of the process to update the city's comp plan. It's a valuable process and will hopefully clear up any of the discrepancies that we noticed were in the plan when we were going through the whole Walmart debacle. It's a very interesting snapshot of what the citizens of Pecosin think about land use, the environment, public space, safety, and roads. They have shared their vision for the city and they deserve to have their opinions heard. When responding to the question to indicate what type of land use you feel would be most appropriate for the Big Woods, the following responses are compelling and worthy of your discussion. Three hundred and fifteen respondents, which is 24%, stated a public park, field, or community center. Nineteen percent, 250 people, stated they wanted undeveloped conservation space. And lastly, 16% stated mixed-use development, including open space, shops, and restaurants. We have a very, very diverse set of opinions, and they deserve being talked about. Our community is engaged and our responses are telling. Forty-three percent of the respondents have specifically indicated that what's going on and what's planned for the Big Woods isn't what they want. So please consider the following actions for tonight. Table the resolution revising and re-establishing the guidelines for the EDA-owned property. Please instruct the EDA to cease all of the marketing on the property until such time as you've had the chance to listen. And please host a public forum and work session to publicly discuss the results from the citizen survey. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name is Dr. Joseph Leegan for Inslee Circle, obviously Pecosin. First off, I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well as City Council. I spoke to you last month and asked you to hold on any decisions that you guys were making till you could get the results of the survey back. I sincerely appreciate you guys doing that. I don't have as many ideas as Janice. I'm probably not as smart as she is. My message is probably a little more vague, but you do have the survey to you now. Number of people did fill it out. We had over 1,000 folks. That's a large percentage. I'm a scientist. If you can get about 10 to 15% of people to respond to a survey, that's considered very, very good. We do have an engaged citizenship. We have just under 30% of folks that did respond. I think that speaks very well for the city and for your leadership in the city, that people felt that they could go ahead and do that. So my message actually is the same as it was last time, that you have the information. Again, how and what you do, I'm not as smart as she, I don't know what to do, but my quest or my plea is that the decisions and the timeline you make with those decisions, my plea is that you do take into consideration the results and the voice of the citizens of Pecosin. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir?
Alan Moody, 207A Brown's Neck Road. I wish I would have went first. They had a lot of facts and figures. It's been a while since I've been up here, so we've got some new faces. Glad to see all y'all here. Thank y'all for letting me speak this evening. About two years ago was my first time stepping foot in this building, as far as in this room, and I learned a lot. I learned that you need to be involved in order to express your opinion. So y'all, as our elected officials, know where we stand and then you can make your best judgment. I came in too late on Legacy, last meeting. My fault, not y'all's. You had plenty of time and information out there for me to see, and I didn't take advantage of it. I think we all learned a lesson from that. And by all, I mean the citizens. Y'all are obviously informed. A lot of us have gotten informed since then. One thing I remember is carrying the property across the street over there doesn't make or break us. I don't have a crystal ball, but I would think that the land across the street would go up in value once the buildings start coming up around here. You're never going to make everybody happy whether the buildings go up or not. I imagine when some trees start falling, you'll hear some more people be upset, but it's all watered under the bridge now. That's happening. Across the street's not. In order to make an informed decision, I think you should listen to all the information that's been gathered. I know that y'all have, and by y'all I mean council, EDA, planning, I know y'all have all come together in meetings and brainstormed what we can do across the street. I ask that you just listen to one more, and that's the survey results. Have an open meeting, work session, discuss the survey results, and then come back and do what you want to do tonight. Then give the EDA the principles, the guidelines, that you want them to go forward to make our city better. Listen to all the citizens, not just the elected ones, but all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of June 26, 2017.
Second. Okay, motion made in second that we approve the minutes of the regular session of June 26. Questions, comments, or additions? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, we're going to modify this evening. This is a public hearing, but the way that we advertised it, we did not feel like we did it justice. What we did, bottom line, was we advertised the same hearing for farm animal ordinance, which is something that we could do, but the Planning Commission modified that ordinance. And when they modified it, we didn't modify our ad. So we're going to re-advertise the public hearing for that. We're not going to take action on this this evening, but if you are here to speak for that, we will take your comments now, or if you would prefer to wait until a future date, you can do that. But Randy, in lieu of addressing the ordinance this evening and then having to repeat it, I was not going to do anything but just your simple presentation.
I apologize to everyone. I determined, we, I found out about a quarter to seven that we had had a problem with the ad, and that was on our end. Typically, we advertise multiple meetings together. It's a way to save money. In this particular case, we missed the nuance that the Planning Commission made significant modifications to the ordinance that it held a public hearing on. And so as to eliminate confusion and provide people the opportunity to speak, we, I talked to the mayor right before the meeting and we, and asked for the ability to re-advertise and have that, hopefully at your very next meeting, and I apologize for that. The ordinance that went to the Planning Commission originally had provisions relating to potentially more flexible and lower standards for smaller versions, pygmy animals, smaller versions of horses, things like that. Also, some provisions pertaining to roosters, and as considered by the Planning Commission also pertaining to bees. The Planning Commission, after their public hearing, took the language relating to bees completely out. They essentially streamlined the smaller animal language to essentially say that the smaller animal is also an animal that is under the same guidelines. So a smaller horse and a regular-sized horse, or both horses, for the purposes of the ordinance put forward by the Planning Commission, and the provisions were made relating to roosters to, I believe it was three acres. You could have one, or you could also go through a conditional use permit process if you would like to. And that was essentially the ordinance coming forward, but the advertisement, as it was in the paper, also included bees and other things. And to eliminate confusion, again, regrettably, I apologize, we would ask that following, we accept public comments from anyone like to speak to tonight and re-advertise the hearing correctly and hopefully have it at your next meeting.
Very well. So with that said, is anybody here this evening that would like to address council on this particular subject? Yes, sir?
Dr. Joseph Leegan. I still live at the same place that I did a couple of minutes ago. I really just want to say that I retired out of the Air Force after 24 years. I'm a process guy, and with Congress looking at you in the Air Force, you always have to be a process guy. And I would just like to commend City Council for the transparency and the way you guys are doing the animal issue here. It's, can sometimes be an annoyance, but you guys are being very transparent, and in delaying this, I think you guys are doing the right thing. That's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to address the farm animal ordinance this evening? Okay, if not, we will close that section of the agenda, although not a public hearing. We will close that section of the agenda and move on to new business. New business is, item one is the EDA guiding principles. Randy, would you like to address this at a high level as well?
Sure. Council members will recall from your discussion approximately two months ago, this item before you, as presented by the Chairman of the EDA who is here, should you wish to hear from him or if he's got a presentation to make, was presented to you two months ago as follow-up action, which we were asked to work towards at a retreat that you had in either very early spring or late winter. I'm sorry, I can't remember which.
Long time ago.
Several months ago. In which the City Council received the interim recommendations of the Bigwood Study Group that was established by council in September of last year, which itself was a follow-up to a previous retreat of about five or six months prior to that. The purpose was, try to summarize, to move the discussion from what it is we could accept, Alan kind of referenced that in his earlier comment, to what we actually wanted. And to be able to be in a position to know the difference so that we could market for those things that as a community we wanted, potentially look at our ordinances further down the road to make sure that the things we wanted, the ordinances, were in proper form, and if there were things we really didn't want, by default, maybe the ordinances needed some work in the other direction as well. So we had that retreat approximately five or so months ago, and coming back in the follow-up, the EDA was asked to do a preliminary study of several different development concepts under a general contextual framework of guiding principles that were established again by council last September. As part of that conversation, the EDA suggested modifications to some of those guiding principles, as well as had comments with regard to the, originally, I believe it was six, identified potential development concepts that might be good. This update represents a refinement of that. It's sort of the, should you approve it? Sort of the next step is for the EDA study group to then, excuse me, Bigwood Study Group to continue its work as charged by council in September. Councilman Freeman is the council's representative on the group. He may have something he wants to add to that that I may have missed. Our economic development director, Dave Callis, is here, and our EDH Chairman, Donald Booth, who is the author of the item in front of you this evening, is also here.
Okay, so council, how would y'all like to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution revising and re-establishing guidelines for development of EDA-owned properties in the Big Woods.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion made in second that we proceed forward. Now we'll open the discussion on this particular item, and I have a feeling there will be at least some comments. But who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay, go right ahead.
You know I have some. So I don't, how many of us have gone through and looked at the survey results? I know they were emailed to us, they weren't in our packet.
I have.
And so I went through them extensively. I guess I want to just reiterate what I did last time, which was, for an example, people in the city really want a Starbucks and a Chick-fil-A.
Really want what?
A Starbucks and a Chick-fil-A.
Okay.
But that's not going to happen, as bad as they want it, because we don't- But that's not going to happen, as bad as they want it, because we don't have the traffic counts, and we don't have the things that businesses look at to bring those businesses in here. My concern is, is that these four things that we've outlined, regional sporting goods, those medical facility, manufacturing, we don't know that we meet the criteria to bring in those businesses either. So I am in favor, and will continue to be in favor, of the big data study that Mr. Callis has suggested, because I think what could happen is, we pass this resolution, we tell them, go look at these four businesses, we spend money, we spend time, just to discover that we don't meet any of the criteria for these businesses either, and it's been a lot of waste of time and money. And I think we should be making an investment in that property, and a big data study would be a way to invest in it. I also, as some of the citizens have said, would like to see maybe a work session to talk about these results. Based on what I looked at, we should be taking off at least two of the four things. It was pretty clear. I thought it was interesting that the demographics of that were the largest, I don't know, I have the percentages here, but it was basically people 55 and over, and who have lived in Pecos in 20 years or more. And they were very clear, 62%. We don't want chain retail, which is, we're telling them to go look at regional sporting goods. We have high-tech manufacturing, which is not even allowed in the zoning that we just passed, general commercial. That's not even a permitted use in there. They did want public-private recreation and a medical facility. Passing this resolution today does not prevent the EDA from marketing that property. It's still on the market. They could sign a contract to sell it tomorrow if they wanted to. So I just don't feel that there is a huge rush, and that having a work session to talk about the results and maybe see if we should change some of these things based on the survey results, maybe we'll decide that we wouldn't, but I would like to see the discussion other than five minutes here.
Bud?
Yeah, I, I seconded it for this reason, in that I understand that the, the results of the, of the surveys were presented to the Planning Commission, and they looked at them, and they've done some things with them, and they agreed to hold a public meeting next month, and they're going to go over those, and they have also agreed to modify the comprehensive plan on a chapter-by-chapter basis, including that information. At least that's what I understand. Am I incorrect in that?
No, you're right.
Okay. That, that's what I understood from the reports that I read. Okay. I also looked at, at the results of that, and, and Janet mentioned we'd like to have a Starbucks, well, I'd like to have a Starbucks there myself, okay? But we have to realize that when people buy a property, we can't tell them exactly what kind of store they're going to put on that property. It becomes private property, and it is not the responsibility of government, nor should it be, to tell somebody specifically what kind of store they can open. It, it has to fall within the guidelines of the zoning ordinance, and passing this ordinance will simply allow them to sell a property, and we're talking about six lots over there out of a whole bunch of lots over there. And so this will give them the opportunity to sell it, but they still have to meet those guidelines. And we still don't have the authority, or the business, or the right, to tell somebody what they can do with a piece of private property once they buy it. And, and for that reason, as long, we've, we've made up a whole list of things that we would really like to have, but it's not our property to do it with, once it's sold, and, and we've got a list of things that we would like to have, and of the things that I saw in the survey that we would like to have, I didn't see anything in passing this that would stop that.
Okay.
And so I think we can still meet the guidelines, and when they modify the comprehensive plan, you know, hopefully somebody will buy that property and do what we really, really would like to have. But whatever it is, it will be within the guidelines of the zoning ordinance. And so there's nothing in passing this that stops that from happening.
Next?
Mr. Mayor, I feel like that we established the EDA many years ago with the direction to market the land that the city owned, because we don't want to be in the business of being a landowner, and we collect no taxes off of any property that this city owns. And we asked them to do that, and now we're going to turn around and every time this resolution comes up, tell them to stop. It just doesn't make any sense. Their, their goal and their purpose is to market the land and to help development. And I think we should give them the guidance that we gave them from the work session. We've, we've modified it once. All this is a modification of what we'd like to see. Doesn't mean that's what's going to happen there. And like Bud said, that's only one small piece of all the hundreds of property owners in the Bigwoods. But it's, it, we, the EDA happens to own it, we collect no taxes on it, and if they sell it, something's developed there, the values are going to go up anyway. They're not dependent upon the legacy for that property value to go up. Whatever they build there will cause it to go up, and we will start generating revenue from it. And to say that it's not costing us anything, it's costing us about $30,000 a year in taxes, just on the assessed value. So I, I think we've delayed this enough. 62% of the respondents equates to about 19% of the population. I don't think 19% is anything to hang your hat on to change the direction of the city.
Yep. Next?
Yeah, it, the Planning Commission developed this survey because we do a comprehensive plan, I think it's over 10 years, and the survey was sent out to help write the comprehensive plan, which we're going to get and look at here in another couple of months, I think, or within a couple of months. The fact that we coincidentally, or simultaneously, I guess is a better word there, decided that we were going to look at the property over here across the road, they're two totally separate issues and were not ever related until just recently, and I really don't think they should be related. I think it was, it was pure coincidence that we decided, well, we had the Bigwood Study Group, and came up with these recommendations after, or about the same time, I guess, that the Planning Commission was developing the survey. But it wasn't a survey for our six parcels across the street. It was a survey for the comprehensive plan, and that's kind of why I think these are separate things. We're not actively marketing that property right now, and really have not been real aggressive on it. It's still got a for-sale sign on it, and somebody walked in with a million and a half, I'm sure we'd sell it to them tomorrow, but we're not going out trying to get people to do that. So I, I still, I think the two things are separate, and a coincidence that the survey for the comprehensive plan went out about the same time we were talking about doing rezoning our one parcel across the street. Anyway, I just wanted to clear that up.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make one comment, and I hope it would help provide peace of mind for people. If you read the wording in the resolution, it says repeatedly, guiding principles, guiding principles to be used as guidance. It's not set in stone, it's not anything permanent, it's guiding principles to move forward in the present tense.
Okay, very well. Councilman Canelo, you haven't had a chance yet, you want to chat?
Sure. You know, I kind of want to echo what Councilman Huck says on, this is just the step for us, you know, the next step in our guidance for the EDA, and, you know, we've been having this discussion since March, and now we've seen the survey results individually, and there's certainly no reason that if we pass this resolution tonight, that, I see no reason that we still can't have a conversation about the survey results, and there's certainly no reason we couldn't come back and either modify, add, or subtract things from this resolution. So I, I certainly see no problem in passing this resolution tonight, and just want to make it very clear, I see no problem, and am open to anyone's opinion on their guidance and what they think is right for this resolution, and, you know, that's something this council can look at again. So nothing says this is the, just because it's the first, it won't be the last time we come back to this. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you.
I just have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Has either the EDA, the city, or the council looked at sort of in a break-even point or an analysis as to if legacy were to be built out, if victory were to be widened, what the value of that property would change to? I did a little bit of talking to developers over the weekend, who obviously can't give us that figure, but if we were to sell the property today and get, for example, if we thought that would happen, say, 10 years from now, and what the value of the property would be then, versus if we sold it at today's value and gained that tax revenue, what would those two figures be? Has anybody looked at, and do we have the figures? Could I see them? Because that would convince me, if you showed me figures that said it is in the best financial interest of the citizens to sell that property today and get the tax revenue, or would we financially be better off waiting, because the value of that property would go up so much, that that would be the best financial decision when it comes to the bottom line?
So Randy, I don't think we have that data, nor would it be scientific in nature, but.
We certainly don't have it. I'd refer to Mr. Booth, he's going like this either. It's not something we have.
Yeah. All right, so a lot of good conversation, lacking some, somewhat clarity for the citizens to be out there. So let me, let me talk through where we are, and Councilwoman Andrews, I appreciate you bringing up Victory Boulevard, because I just added that to my notes. Victory Boulevard is being discussed at the state level as a temporary fix, okay? That is just adding a third lane to what is there. That is all the money the state has. It is not in the foreseeable future that Victory Boulevard will be what I foresaw, which is a divided four-lane highway. Okay? So I want to, want to clarify that I don't, while it may impact the property value, the market could just as easily affect the property value in a negative way. I will tell you that we've done due diligence and due process on this. This isn't something council's done by itself, not something the EDA's done by itself, not something the Planning Commission has done by itself, but the uniqueness of those three processes and the Bigwood Study Group, which was, which was put out there, basically gives you four groups saying, hey, we, we need to do something. The next thing is that the land is not free. The land was actually purchased by the city for this purpose, and that was to keep four or five different property owners from doing spot development, and that happened after Kentucky Hut basically took off and said, what would it look like in this haphazard manner, and can we exercise some control over it? So the city actually bought that. So not only is there the lost tax revenue that Councilman Green talks about, but we are paying debt and interest on that. So by contrast, basically, it is somewhere just south of $50,000 a year that that property costs the city, between principal interest and loss of tax revenue. Right. So it is not a free, and it can't, it, while it doesn't break us, that doesn't mean that there's not better use of those tax dollars for other services, such as a fireman. The next thing is that the, that this basically just reopens the door to start conversation. I want to read a couple of excerpts from the thing and see where they kind of jive up with what I heard from the survey. I did read the survey results. It was just like most surveys, it's, it's kind of over the map, and we're going to have to do some sit-down, and we will, but that's part of the planet, of the comprehensive plan thing. But basically, it says that the city should consider public-private partnerships for development that may increase opportunities for cultural, recreational, or entertainment uses. That was one of the things that was discussed. It says, "Development should enhance the quality of life for the citizens to include to remain in the city for jobs, shopping, dining, recreation, or entertainment." Now, some people took exception that they don't want any additional reason to stay in the city. That's, that's some opinion, but jobs was not addressed. Development should not be, this was just as important, fully residential in nature, should not include, to include, single-family homes, apartments, townhomes, fully residential. Not to be public development. In other words, the city is not a developer, we do not want to do this. We didn't do this on the South Side, and I've seen cities, Hampton, Newport News, lose their shirt on development. Public buildings, no. That's what it says cannot be there. And it cannot be developed in pieces, which stops you from, so it's basically some guiding principles. And then the one thing that was excluded was the discussion of a medical facility. So for an aging population, I would think that that is something that we certainly want to consider. And so to me, it, it doesn't give away control, it just tells the EDA, please get back out there and have conversation. And as well, one other piece of information was that the Planning Commission took us up on the discussion of the one lot to make it the same zone, and that was passed, and that's coming to us, I think, in the very near future. Next month. Next month. All right, so it'll all be the same zoning. So I see nothing that by proceeding forward with this, that it does anything more than starts conversation again, and I'm, I'm good with that. All right, so with that said, any closing comments that are different? Okay. Okay, seeing none, we have a motion made and seconded to move forward with the resolution. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Andrews?
With complete respect for my fellow council people, and just on principle for myself, I have to vote no on this.
Say that again?
She said no.
She said no, okay, thank you. Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one.
Okay, very well. Next item on the agenda, back to it, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for solid waste disposal services. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask our public works director, Tom Jones, to come forward and briefly summarize this for you. Tom and his team have taken the lead, as you see, from the staff memo in, in the selection process. The short version is, we're not expecting any significant or major changes from the way we deliver service right now under the new contract.
Tom, you come, you come several times, and I always get, don't get my chance to say thank you for what you do.
I appreciate that.
As you lead into this, I, I want you to know that what you deliver, what you and your team deliver to this city with the assets that we provide to you, and the way that you take care of those assets, is to be commended.
We appreciate that.
What a value, what a value to our citizens. So go ahead.
Thank you very much for that, and like I say, what you just said, it, it's not me, it's a, it's a group of guys that just, they love to work here in the city, and they appreciate what you guys stand behind and do for us. But getting on to the business at hand, you know, our solid waste contract, you know, it runs out in October. So we went out on RFP style, and we've got, I think we had, actually, we had five people bid on it, and, you know, to make a long story short, you know, bay disposal, the people that have it now, they were actually the low bidder, and, you know, we have a really good relationship with them. They do a great job. I have full confidence that, you know, they'll come in, you know, and do the same job. It'll be basically the exact same services that we have now, and that's pretty much it in a nutshell. And I'll try to answer, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those questions.
Any questions, Tom? I will tell you that personally, I'm pleased that we're not going to have to go through a learning curve again, because, you know, as with any new contractor, it's, there's a learning curve, and so this will just be seamless, so I appreciate that. Appreciate the bid, being the lowest is never, never a problem.
It's a good thing.
All right, so is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Bay Disposal Incorporated for roadside solid waste collection.
Set. Okay, motion made and seconded. What, one question on this, Randy, or Tom, what, the duration of this particular contract?
This contract will be for five years, and at the end of that five years, we can go like an additional five years if we want to, or we can go, you know, in one like, an additional five years if we want to, or we can go, you know, in one-year increments up to five additional years. So it could be a ten-year, you know, longevity contract.
Very good. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion made and seconded. Any comments? Okay, didn't think I'd see any. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Huck.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
I guess, are you going to stay here for the...
No, I'm leaving now. No, I'm staying, I'm staying.
I'm sorry.
Just kidding.
So the next item under new business is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a sewer cleaning truck.
Mr. Speechley, it's hard to follow a trash contract, and, but I think a sewer vacuum truck is a, is a good set.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, we're coming to you tonight, as the mayor referred, we have limited resources in the city, and we have a need for a, not a, it's a new resource, it's actually replacing one we did away with a few years ago. That's a sewer cleaning machine, it's a smaller one than the large truck we currently use, it's an addition to the large truck, the large truck does things the smaller one doesn't do. We went out on the joint, National Joint Powers Act and talked to several contractors, and we feel we got a good price on a good machine. If there's any particular questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I don't know about questions, and I'll follow up with that, but I will tell you the same thing I told the Public Works Director, and that is, what y'all do for the three or four folks that you have and working in this, this citywide sewer, and I will tell you up at, it's one of the, one of the highlights of this city is that we're 100% sewered. And there's a lot of communities, including most of our neighbors, and especially our county neighbor, that are not. And so when we talk about our efforts to meet TMDL limits and generally just clean the bay, it's been through the service of your team. And I really appreciate everything that you do to keep these systems up and running through hurricanes, through floods, through all some of the most difficult situations I've, I've ever seen. So thank you for what you do, and it'd be my pleasure to, to help you along with this if I can get a, a motion made and seconded.
Just one question.
Okay.
Bob, this one doesn't have a vacuum capability.
That is correct.
Strictly cleaner.
That's more than doubles the price of the truck, and one is enough, the jetter we need.
Right.
And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those kind words, and on behalf of my staff and all the city staff, we all work together, and I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody of that.
Thank you very much for that.
And I just wanted to point out that this was already funded, funded a piece of equipment in the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Any other questions? Now, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Virginia Public Works Equipment Company.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, that we purchase a sewer cleaning truck, so tonight, this evening, we will have taken care of trash and sewer one more time. So I'm, I'm good with that. So, and very important, because I'll tell you one thing, your phone will ring off the hook if the trash is not going and the sewer is backing up.
That is correct.
That is called general principle. All right, so final questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Huck.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the next and final item under new business is a resolution making an appointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Somebody prepared with that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from the Eastern Precinct with the name of Stephen C. Forrest inserted.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, that we proceed forward and put Stephen Forrest on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Huck.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, comments to the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items this evening. One is to give you an update, the public an update on where we are with the breakwater repair at Messick Point. As soon as the nesting osprees are gone, we're contracted and ready to go. But the Migratory Bird Act, which actually has a longer title than that, prohibits us from disturbing them, but they should be gone by the end of the month, so with any luck, with a little help from Mother Nature, we'll get that repaired done in August.
Okay, very good.
And the other item, I know you're going to speak to it, and I don't mean to instill your thunder, but I do want to take a moment and recognize Teresa Owens, who's in the back corner. This is her last council meeting with us, you know, two weeks from, well, actually, nine more workdays from now. Teresa will be going on to, to accept a position with York County, and she will do a great job there, and we will miss her. And thank you for everything that you have done for us, for your nine-plus years of service to the city. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bud?
I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight and everyone at home who participated in our meeting, and I'd like to welcome our new city employees and some in their new positions, and look forward to seeing you next month.
Councilwoman Andrews.
I just wanted again to say congrats to Gabriel, our Eagle Scout. I'm an Eagle Scout mom, so I know how much work that is to get, so I congratulate him and wish Teresa well and her new position. I know they're very lucky to have her, and we're very sad to lose her. And while I feel that we should take the Big Woods property personally off the market until we've done some more analysis, I appreciate everything the EDA does and am confident that, you know, that they will do a good job going forward, you know, now that they have this resolution. And thank everybody who came and spoke tonight. I think that's always a wonderful thing, and, you know, I would really encourage other people in the city, me being one of those prior citizens that didn't pay enough attention to their city government, and now I do in a big way, and plan on continuing that even when I'm not on council, and I would encourage our other citizens to, to do that. We have boards and commissions, which I didn't know about when I was a citizen, when I was a citizen for many years, didn't realize there were boards and commissions I could serve on, and we do have them. And so if you are interested in serving in your community, you know, please come up to the city and talk to them and get a board bank application and put your application in to serve.
Very good. Mr. Vice Mayor.
I also am an Eagle Scout dad, and that's quite an accomplishment that a young man, I think it's less than 1% of the Boy Scouts that ever make Eagle, and that's a pretty big deal. I agree with Councilwoman Andrews' comments about being involved and knowing what's going on, and other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, very well. Councilman Huck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no comment tonight.
Okay. Councilman Green.
Three things, if I could, Mr. Mayor, first, to congratulate Teresa and to tell you that we are certainly going to miss you. You, you have done a super job and have always given us all the information that we could ever want. Also, I attended the Transportation Planning Organization meeting last Thursday, and we took care of some paperwork that will allow us, that will now move forward, that resolution that we adopted months ago about the I-64 from all the way from Bowers Hill through the third segment. Had a good conversation about the no-man's land, and some good thoughts came out of that. I think it was a consensus of everybody's opinion that the state needs to step up and take care of that.
That's 460? Is that 460?
No, no, this is the last piece before you get to Richmond.
Oh, okay.
Even Segment 3 doesn't get us all the way to Richmond.
Gotcha.
And Richmond owns a piece of, or is responsible for a piece of it, Hampton Roads is responsible for a piece of it, so therefore, nothing's been done to advance it.
Very good. No, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
But we're, we're talking about it, and hopefully something will get done. And it was interesting, they had a study done about the future of all the cities in Hampton Roads, and the growth that was projected for precaution was very, very small, something like 300 households in 2045. So I thought that was very interesting. Also, to remind everybody, tomorrow's Food Bank Day at the Old City Hall from 10 to 1. The American Legion is hosting it, and they always do a great job, and I understand they have a check for us to buy some much-needed meat products, so we appreciate that.
Very good. Councilman Canelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just, like, just in reference to the resolution we passed tonight, just, you know, I know there are some people disgruntled in this city, but the conversations this council has had for, quite frankly, a number of years now, and, you know, one thing coming into this, I knew whatever I voted on, somebody was going to be upset about it. And I, I don't like that, but I know that's what's going to happen. And I just want to assure those on the opposite side of this that we're going to continue this conversation, and I will also push to continue the conversation about the property, like the Vice Mayor said, across the road. So that conversation is not over, and I'm looking forward to continue that, and I know other members of council are as well. And, but that, that's all I've got.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna refine my, my comments this evening to just thanking Teresa. I think council has said everything else really well. A lot of people in the, the city may or may not know what your benefit has been from her service, but I will tell you that our audits are clean, our accountability of funds are always very among the top. I will tell you that it was much to her credit, and I don't mean that tongue-in-cheek, but much to her credit that we were able to achieve a AAA bond rating because of the financial plan that both her, she and her staff worked on, that Randy championed as far as a leadership. But when it comes right down to doing the brass tacks and doing the work, it was Teresa and her staff. We are greatly going to miss Teresa. I, it really gets under my skin that she's going to York County, but it's okay because she comes from Gloucester, so it's a whole lot better drive for her. All right, so they've got, they've got a gem, and we do have a very capable person coming in, in the back, backside of that, and we look forward to introducing her in the coming weeks. But Teresa, I would like you to come up here and let everybody see your face, because I want everybody in this city to know who it was. And, and she, you know, we, we went to bond council up in New York, I will tell you that she got along, she, she knew those New York streets pretty well, too, so.
I know how much I love this. Thank you all very much, I really do appreciate it. It's been, I actually was crying back there, you'll need to stop. So I really do appreciate everything the job done, the staff, the citizens, everybody. It's been, it's been a, a great opportunity.
It's been a joy for us.
And Teresa, before you get away, I would be sorely remiss if I did not publicly thank you for all that you've done for the city. I apologize for making, not making that comment up front.
I know.
My brain's a bit swamped. However, you're the, you're the result, we've got many financial awards for the city, and we wish you well in your new position.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
Randy, you told us she can't take the checkbook with her, right?
But, but she could send York County checks over here, as long as they didn't bounden me. But yes, sir.
Okay. I think that's it, no closed session, so taking a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, we adjourn. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Huck.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, and we are adjourned.